Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, October 24th, 2023, meeting of the Long Meadow School Committee. School committees and other public bodies may continue to hold remote meetings through March 31st, 2025, under legislation enacted on March 29th, 2023. The statute, Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, extends quorum reductions for remote meetings. All votes while there is remote participation must be made by roll call vote. This meeting is being recorded and aired live on LCTV. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under our, indivisible, with the vision of justice for all.
All right, we will begin with correspondence. We'll turn it over to our clerk. Turn it over. Okay, go for it.
An email from Corey Spalding dated September 25th, 2023 regarding policies over federal grants. An email from Ms. Leica L.K. dated October 3rd, 2023 regarding the literacy program utilized by the district. An email from Joshua Benoit dated October 12th, 2023 regarding the school calendar. An email from Ms. Jean Visser dated October 11th, 2023 regarding the district's elementary literacy program. And an email from Mr. Joshua Benoit dated October 17th, 2023, following up to his email of October 12th regarding the school calendar.
All right, thank you very much. Moving on to approval of minutes, we have two recommended motions. I'll start with the first.
I move that the school committee approve the minutes to the September 26th, 2023 school committee meeting as presented.
Thank you. You have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, we'll move to a roll call vote. Zach?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
And nobody's online, right, other than Diane? Okay, and yes for me. Wonderful. We have a second recommended motion.
I move that the school committee approve the minutes to the October 11th, 2023 school committee meeting as presented.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a roll call vote. Zach?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
And yes for me as well. All right, we are moving on to visitor comments. If there are any visitors online, I do not see any. We do not have any here, so we'll roll right ahead to school committee announcements and recognitions. Does anybody have any announcements or recognitions for this week?
I do.
Mary?
Thanks to the Timmy Strong organization, Kyle Berkey and Tim Allen, who presented to the cross-country kids about CPR on Monday. Andrew was there. I don't know if you're going to talk about that later. And, you know, I'm just very happy that we're talking about this with our student athletes.
Wonderful.
Thanks.
Any other announcements or recognitions? All right, we have no business with guests, so we're moving on to administrative reports. I just had a couple of things. Number one, a big thank you to all of the teachers and staff over at the high school for the recent open house night. Always great to get a chance to go in and see different teachers and talk about our individual kids and see the community come out for that. And I know elementary is this week, so a really thank you to them. And then lastly, so we get a lot of emails that are going out to the community at large from each of the different schools, and I just wanted to note that I've seen a lot of really great community service projects happening across the district. So just a big thanks to all of the members of the Long Meadow Public Schools community for the work they're doing, from Helping Hands and a drive happening for Katie's Closet over at Center School, to a coat drive happening at Blueberry Hill, to the recent collection drive at Long Meadow High School through the Key Club for newly arrived Ukrainian refugee families to the valley. Lots of great work out there, so very heartwarming to see how many people are actively involved in helping those in their community and keep that going. Thank you. All right, that's all for me. We'll turn to you, superintendent.
Sure, yeah, and to build off of what you said, the emails that go home from the schools really convey how busy our schools are, this week especially with Halloween parades and the chamber concert at Long Meadow High tomorrow, a building committee meeting tomorrow. So lots happening. Nilda Erzary is organizing a night for Metco families tomorrow evening, so lots of great stuff happening. Just wanted to update the committee on some professional development opportunities that I've had a chance to take part in. Most recently, took part in an MSBA webinar focused on clean energy investments and the potential for us to access federal incentives in the Mass Save Program, so more to learn about that, but certainly some interesting incentives are out there in the changing regulatory environment as well that we'll have to stay on top of. Additionally, there was a webinar presented by the Mass Taxpayers Foundation on migration patterns in Massachusetts. Very interesting, and many committee members are interested in the slide deck that went with that. I can pass it along, but really some interesting migration patterns that are shaping public education in Massachusetts. On Thursday, Ms. Erzary and I will attend the first meeting of the Superintendent DEI Director Partnership. That's a partnership sponsored by the Mass Association of School Superintendents, and we're heading down to, I think it's Marlboro, for that event, and it's the first of several meetings designed to strengthen the partnership between superintendents and DEI officers. And then next week, the Rennie Center, which is a sort of business education think tank, is sponsoring a report called "The Condition of Education in Massachusetts," and so looking forward to attending that. SEL implementation is ongoing. This committee has been briefed on this previously, but the SEL implementation team came together late last week. I had an opportunity to visit with them for a short time, and a lot of great energy on implementing social-emotional learning initiatives in the district this year with a strong focus on adult SEL, which is important to us as well. The committee is aware that there's a new comprehensive physical education and health framework that's been issued by the state of Massachusetts, and so our wellness teachers are in the process of unpacking that and understanding how we can revise our scopes and sequences to fit the needs of students here in Long Meadow. So that work will be going on for several months, I would say. We have parent-teacher conferences at the elementary level this week, and it gives us an opportunity to provide some needed professional development for our paraprofessionals. They'll take part in some training on assistive technology and also some training on behavioral redirection and behavioral coaching for students. And then a couple of meetings of subcommittees next week. The Policy Sub and the Curriculum Sub will be meeting. Policy Sub especially, I'd like you to take a look at a new Chromebook policy, a new Chromebook practice that we'd like to get some feedback on. Specifically, it could involve a protection plan or a device replacement plan. Chromebooks obviously are central to our instruction nowadays. When COVID hit, we sort of rolled out those devices very promptly, but now we need some policy and practice, some written practice, to catch up to the deployment of those devices. And then Beth is here, Dr. Beth Nelson is here, and her first opportunity to meet with the committee in her new role as our curriculum director, and so we'll hear from Beth later on some of the initiatives that she's been leading in recent weeks, so that's all.
All right, wonderful. Thank you. Any questions or follow-up on any of the things in the report? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to any other administrative reports.
I don't have a formal report. I did just want to read the school committee that we completed the food service RFP. Our contract expires at the end of this month. We're working with DESI to ensure that an award this time does not run into any issues, so it appears we will be able to stay with our current food service provider. So my plan would be to bring it to Finance Sub at our next meeting and then to School Committee on the 14th of November for our next meeting for approval of the contract.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. Any follow-up questions there? So the 14th would be after the contract runs out, but there would be a new one sort of interim in that gap space?
Since there's no disruption to the vendor, I don't think of any issue.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. Student representative report.
Thank you. So our first-ever pep rally will be held this Friday, October 27th, in the gym from 1:15 to 2:15 p.m. I think all the students are very excited about it. The classes are preparing to each dress in a certain color and have certain chants. I think it's going to be really awesome for school spirit. And then the LHS apparel shop has opened for all students through Sunday, the 29th of October. This includes t-shirts, sweatshirts, all that sort of stuff. And then the Class of 2025 is hosting a fall ball on November 17th. The Class of 2024 also hosted that last year in the gym in November. And then kind of the biggest thing that happened this week was the College and Career Fair was hosted yesterday for juniors and seniors in the cafeteria. There was a variety of colleges from all over the Northeast, and then some even, then one, the University of Alabama was even here. So it was mainly colleges from the Northeast. And then we also had a variety of professionals here to talk more about what they do and their careers, one including the Springfield Police Department. And then something I found really interesting was Putney Student Travel was here, which is a student travel organization for middle and high schoolers. It's mainly summer programs, so they were here to talk with students. I talked to them about their summer programs, which includes a variety of things, including career prep, so you can go to Germany and learn about what BMW and Volkswagen is doing with sustainability, or you can go to Italy and learn about farm-to-table work. And you can also do service trips to countries in Asia and South America, including teaching people how to speak English in schools. So really awesome trips, and they also just do like general exploration in Europe. So I thought that was really interesting. It was great that we got to have them here. And then to move on into athletics, athletes from every eligible sport will receive training on how to perform CPR. It's not for certification, but it's just sort of general training that is important and helpful in any sort of situation where you may need to perform CPR. The boys' cross-country team was the first to receive this yesterday in the back gym. This included a presentation from the American Red Cross with a video and then certain slides, and then you got to practice on test dummies. And then the girls volleyball team won their Western Mass quarterfinal last night and will play in the semifinal on Wednesday. So thank you.
All right, thank you, Andrew. Great. All right, other reports, LPBC.
Yes, we met on October 18th, and the meeting began with a presentation by Ms. Vennetta Lightfoot, who is the new coordinator, or new-ish coordinator, of diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging. And she kind of gave an overview of some of the initiatives that she's been working on, including the creation of a website. She was great. It was really informative, and she's doing a lot of good work and really interested in engaging all of the districts. So I was excited about some of the things that she's doing. Another highlight was our bus conversation, and I know we make a joke about how much I talk about busing with LPBC, but it's such an important part of the program. You know, we have to get the kids to the sites, and we also have to get them back. And there has been some challenges with busing, particularly with a lack of drivers. We had, apparently, we had a lot of people in place to fill those positions, and now we don't. And so it has in particular affected busing in Long Meadow. So I know that Marty has brought this up to LPBC to try to navigate the challenges there. So I reiterated it at the meeting that, you know, it does seem that one of our buses in particular is consistently late, and really advocated for some better communication about when the bus will be late, and also a sort of plea to say, could we come up with some strategies for having the buses maybe rotate drivers or something, which doesn't sound like it would be a perfect solution, so that our buses, when they are returning, aren't returning so late because it makes all of our kids go home late. So that was a rather robust conversation. The new director there is really doing a great job. He, one of the things that I've very much appreciated is that he has begun sending weekly updates to the board. So it's nice to have a little bit more of an understanding of some of the good happenings there, because I feel like in the past it's been more of a financial presentation, because the finances, obviously, for LPBC are very complicated. So, and the other thing is we've started meeting in person, which there is something really nice about, you know, getting the group together, and I feel like the discussions are very thoughtful, and hearing about what's happening in the different districts has been a really nice addition to the meetings. So, thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. All right, energy and sustainability, I don't think we have anything on right now. SEAL.
The next SEAL meeting is on November 8th, and it's going to be the Basic Rates: Understanding the IEP, presented by the Federation of Children with Special Needs. So anyone's welcome to Zoom in or come in person. One of the goals of SEAL this year is to kind of get more outreach from parents in the community, so it would be great if anyone wants to come. I'll be there.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. And then we have Middle School Building Committee update, which has kind of worked into yours. We're meeting on Wednesday.
Yeah.
We're going to be seeing a presentation.
Colliers, our project manager, will be introduced to the building committee tomorrow night, and also will begin conversations about the designer selection process. And so the Middle School Building Committee will need to pull together a designer selection subcommittee to make that choice. And then once we get a designer on board, which I anticipate will be in January sometime, then we can really dive into the feasibility work, particularly around starting to envision what a program would look like in a new school.
All right. All right, we are headed into Subcommittee Reports, Finance Subcommittee. Jamie, number one.
Yeah, thank you. We have one item for consideration tonight. It is a list of our FY24 grant awards to list out the various grants that we've received, at least at the time that the memo was written. The amounts, I would say, are very similar to the previous FY23 amounts, with a couple exceptions. Our Title I grant is, I'd say, about double the amount that we received in FY23, and our Metco grant is about $22,000 or $23,000 more than also the amount that we had in FY23. So tonight we would have a question that the school committee accept. The awards for FY24, this would be followed by a budget amendment at some point in a subsequent meeting, adjusting our budget to reflect the actual amounts that we were awarded compared to what we had budgeted when we built the FY24 budget.
All right, questions related to FY24 grants?
Yeah, and just to clarify, because I think you mentioned this in our subcommittee meeting, but compared to budget, plus minus?
Yeah, we're plus, I'd say about $200,000, about $150,000.
So positive, the positive.
More than what we had budgeted.
Which is a good thing.
Yes, it is.
Any other questions and/or possible motions?
I move on the recommendation of the Finance Subcommittee that the school committee accept the FY24 grants as specified on the FY24 grants memo dated 9/29/2023.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a roll call vote. Zach?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
And yes for me as well. All right.
Thank you.
That's all for Finance. There we go. Policy Subcommittee.
Policies, BFDH, Public Participation at School Committee Meetings, and JICFB, Bullying Prevention, continue to be posted on the district's website to solicit public feedback. They will come for a second reading and for approval during the November 14th meeting.
All right, great. No report for Curriculum Sub, which will be meeting on Monday of next week, and no report for Evaluation Sub. So we are headed into ongoing business, which brings us to the school committee goals. We return to our goals.
Could I?
Absolutely.
I wonder if the committee would be okay with reversing the order?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, definitely.
Get Dr. Nelson off to her.
Off to her evening. That sounds like a great plan. Yes, we're going to jump forward to student achievement and growth, and we will introduce Dr. Beth Nelson, our new director of curriculum and instruction.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. I'm in my fifth week now in the new role, so in those five weeks, I set out on listening tours. I have met with every single pre-K to 5 teacher in the district, met with every department head at the high school, although I have two tomorrow morning, met with every curriculum coordinator K through 8, and met with many other stakeholders throughout the district to really learn a lot of the themes that are emerging, some of our needs, some of our more urgent needs, as well as some of our strategic needs going forward. Some really great things I've heard are bridges. The, every grade level has just commented on how strong the mathematical thinking is from our students this year. Bridges was implemented K to 5 last year. We are moving forward with piloting bridges for our preschool, which is really exciting. So they have a really great program that's broken down developmentally to three and four-year-olds and also half-day. So we're in talks with the reps right now to pilot that, to see if it is appropriate for our preschool program here in Long Meadow. They're very exciting. I know Sue Bertrand announced to you all through an email last year that we are accepted into the MTSS Math Academy. We are actually going to be training 30 LPS educators beginning November 4th. So we will have two cohorts of 15 teachers each. So we already have 33 educators trained in AVMR, Advanced Math Recovery, but after December 7th, we will have 30 additional. So we'll have 63 of our K to 5 educators. So this will put us, position us to have every preschool through second-grade classroom teacher, as well as every special education teacher in the district, K to 5, our math interventionists and math coaches trained in advanced math recovery, which is just a wonderful skills and concepts to really understand developmentally where students, where any of their gaps in their learning and mathematic thinking may occur. It aligns perfectly with bridges as well, so it's a great opportunity for the district to do that work. So we're very excited about that. We have some really great embedded PD going on with both our math and literacy coaches. So in the month of September, our literacy coaches met with all grade-level teachers. They are doing half-day trainings. The month of October was math, so November will shift back to literacy again. We have been busy planning the directors, so Director Nicole Paris-Crow, Director Nilda Erzary, and myself, professional development for March 8th. Right now, we have 14 different themes that are both teacher-led as well as some outside presenters, and we'll be running through three sessions for that day, and teachers will be able to have choice in the sessions that they are attending. So we're hoping to finalize those plans and be able to share that with our faculty in the coming weeks. That brings me to the 2023 MCAS results, and I know there was a lot of numbers and data in the presentation. I think when Marty came to you all two weeks ago, there was some feedback that you would like some more information about cohort tracking over time, some subgroups, as well as just a little bit more of the accountability data. So that's what we tried to capture in this presentation. The first two, of course, the glow things that we wanted to celebrate was that in both math and ELA, every single grade level improved from 2022. We are seeing that we are recovering, we're recovering at a rate a little bit greater than the state. Some grade levels more so than others, and some subjects more so than others. Our school-based accountability percentages are very high, which was very exciting to see. Our 83% or more are, were outperforming all other states and all of those schools in the district, in the Commonwealth. The, I think it's more apparent when we get into the slides to talk about exceeding the achievement targets, but the student growth across the district was really something to celebrate. And I think when you're looking at student growth and when you're considering what that means, that means that those students are outperforming the students that were at the same achievement level as them the year prior. So it really goes to show the work that our teachers are putting in every single day to make sure that kids are continuing to move forward and growing at a rate higher than their peers. Areas that we need to continue to look at and evaluate, and these are, this isn't new to our district, it's not new to education, but our high-needs students, our students with disability, and our lowest-performing students. But I think one thing that we have found when we look at our lowest-performing students this year is the theme that chronic absenteeism has played into that. It's kind of starting in elementary school, but you really start to see those students become the lowest-performing 25% in middle, and it's really apparent in high school. So we are, as an administrative team, kind of doing a deeper dive and a case study on attendance and just working on supporting those families and making sure that we're getting students to school so that they can be in our classrooms and learning every day.
Chronic absenteeism defined as students that miss more than 10% of the school year.
Of the school year. So 18 days or more in a school year on a 180-day school plan.
The numbers statewide and across the nation are really staggering to see, and it's something that needs attention locally and regionally and across the country.
So this are the two slides that you saw two weeks ago that Superintendent O'Shea presented to you. Any questions there? Thank you.
Yep, just move through these ones. It's math. We had highlighted these in green to show the growth over 2022, but we thought it was important to link it back to the pre-pandemic levels of achievement, and you'll see where we stand relative to the 2019 achievement levels.
So there, this is the accountability levels of all of the schools in the district. Just want to highlight that it's our performance relative to other schools in the Commonwealth, and it's also using data over a two-year period of time. So it's not just looking at 2023, it's looking at 2022 as well as 2023. And then the next slide demonstrates DESI's targets that are set for Long Meadow Public Schools. So you can see everything in green is our, for the high school, and it has all of the subgroups. So while we met many of our targets this year, where we didn't meet our targets, students with disabilities, you'll notice just how much more the target is, increases year over year. So where all students have to increase 1.6 points annually, our subgroups have to achieve at much higher levels, which just makes it that much more difficult to meet those targets. Even still, many of our subgroups did a remarkable job meeting those targets this year. It just highlights too, though, that our students with disabilities next year will be at 497.8. So they'll have nearly nine points that they would have to go to get their, hit their target next year. And those are the numbers that are set for Long Meadow by DESI.
Light green being the areas where we've met targets, darker green being where we, there was improvement, but we did meet the target, and red where there was actually declines in average achievement levels.
Any questions on the targets that are set or where we performed as a district this So the same is true for the next slide, where high school is up top in green and our third through eighth grade subgroups are on the bottom in yellow. We improved in the high school area year over year, but we did not, we only met one of the targets. Again, it's just highlighting the increase that those subgroups have to achieve each year to meet the targets. In elementary, we achieved, we improved year over year in every category, but did not meet all of our targets, and again, highlighting just how much we need to grow each year to meet the targets.
Can I ask that question?
Absolutely.
So these are, do we, are these groups with whom we historically miss our targets, or we typically meet them and now we're missing them?
Students with disabilities, high needs are historically where we do not meet our targets. The lowest performing is a newer accountability feature that they're looking at. They're not looking at that for 10th graders, they're only looking at that for third through eighth graders, and that is our lowest-performing 25% student population. So for consecutive years. So we're not looking at third graders as our lowest performing, but we're looking at the other grade levels, and they are taking into account absenteeism in that lowest-performing group.
Okay. And then those other categories that you mentioned, like, so like low income... Okay. And then those other categories that you mentioned, like, so like low income, students with disabilities, are those populations growing, staying the same? Like, are the numbers of students in those categories changing?
Students with disabilities, I would want to ask Nicole Paris-Crowe to report out on that. I'm not sure how much that's changed over the past two years since we've returned. With regards to low income, I think that would be Mr. Maz's question.
I think we're seeing a slight increase in the number of students that are falling into that low-income category.
And low-income category for this year is indicating students eligible for free or reduced lunch, transitional assistance, SNAP, if there's Children Foster Care Program with DCF, Mass Health, or if they are up to 185% of the federal poverty level.
Need this slide or we're good on this?
A lot of information, just more about the data and how the data is. But if anybody wants me to cover any of that specifically, I'm happy to. Any questions there? All right. Keep going. So again, this is breaking it down by school a little bit more. I think that was one of the questions that you had asked for at the end of last meeting. I think that this gives a good overview that overall, you know, a large percentage of our students are meeting or exceeding the targets in elementary. Any questions about any of the?
Does each number represent a student?
It's percentage.
Of the percentage.
Percentage of.
I think one of the things we asked at the last meeting was what, what do you all think about the differences across the schools? And how have those changed over time?
So that, I get into that in a slide a little bit further, not necessarily by the schools, but we're tracking cohorts over time.
I think it's something that, you know, we pay attention to. I think one of the things to remember is you're talking about, I don't know, around 70 students roughly, give or take, at each grade level at each school. So a small number of students can swing those percentages.
Right. Well, that's why I was wondering if we look at it like year over year. So like, is it consistently that the schools are kind of lining up this way?
Yeah, I'd say you always have aberrations. I see one number on there that I'd say is an aberration. But, you know, I'd say Blueberry has tended to be historically achieved at higher rates. We've seen a greater percentage of students meeting and exceeding. And Center and Wolf Swamp have been comparable, I'd say. I'm speaking in broad stroke terms, I guess.
Again, middle school, very comparable in ELA. And the high school is really getting back to pre-pandemic targets with 75% meeting or exceeding. Math in elementary, and this is, you know, truly one area. You see 54 up there for Blueberry, so I did go back and dig. And when that, this cohort of students was in third grade, they were at 51. When this cohort of students was in fourth grade, they were at 57. So that cohort of students, that grade level, is performing pretty consistently through the years. It's just, it does stand out to the other scores across the elementary schools.
But when we look at things like that, I'm just curious, like, are we thinking about, because they are small cohorts, so you can sort of trace some of the stuff back to like, you know, we've had instances where we've been down, like, short on teachers in the, in the schools. Like, are we seeing, are we tracing these things back to like, it's a difference in the populations in the schools? Or there are actual identifiable, you know, because those, the fifth graders would have been in second grade when we were high.
Correct. They're down in sixth grade, correct.
And it's hard to compare sort of the fifth-grade math test to the fourth-grade math test to the third-grade math test. So you're, you're dealing with two variables. One is your different cohorts of students taking the test every year. And then the other is, it's a, it's a different test at every grade level. So that, you know, that, I'd say, you know, year to year to year, I think the state tries to calibrate it where, you know, the one particular grade level's test is not necessarily harder than another particular grade level's test. But I can't say that they're always successful with that. Science, Technology, and Engineering.
Sorry, can you go back to that one? I mean, it just sticks, sticks out to me that you have like almost 10% of kids at center not meeting. And Williams is pretty high, too.
Yeah.
How are we thinking about that?
I think we're, one of the thoughts is, you know, when we, we adopted the FOS Science Series five years ago.
Seven.
Seven years ago, seven years ago. It doesn't seem like it's been that long. And in the meantime, we've had a math adoption and, you know, we're taking a hard look at, at elementary literacy right now. I think one of the challenges is trying to find adequate time for science at the elementary level. And so some discussions among the administrators about scheduling and how we use instructional time to address some of the science numbers that we're seeing.
I think it's important, too, to know and understand that the fifth-grade science is third through fifth-grade curriculum. So when those fifth graders were in third grade, we were in school two days a week. Teachers were focused on ELA and math. So there was nearly a whole year that was really missed. And even sixth-grade science, yes, they were getting that two days a week, but you're not getting an entire curriculum two days a week. So I do think that while some of those numbers may be somewhat alarming, I think that there's hope, like you look at Long Meadow High School, and that's over just one-year curriculum. And by that point, the students are getting that science understanding.
Are the, could I ask a question? Are the schedules the same at the elementary schools? Like, do they have the same number of minutes for each?
They're pretty similar, but it does vary based on their recess or lunch and their special schedule. But there, it's the expectation that they all have the same number of minutes for each subject daily.
I mean, I'm just thinking Long Meadow High School students probably have science every single day for a consistent amount of time. You know, so if you're seeing gains in science in the high school level, I just wonder about number of minutes of instruction. I know it's hard to fit science into elementary and social studies when you're prioritizing math and literacy.
Yeah, no, I, I think you're, you hit the nail on the head is, I think our teachers would say that they're challenged to really find the time to get that FOS series in. So I think that's something that we need to take a hard look at.
If I'm remembering correctly, that's the curriculum that is very hands-on and often requires a lot of setup and breakdown.
Yes, so we're using FOS K to six. So in sixth grade, they are getting science every day. But in elementary school, it's, they're, they're really working hard to try to get it in. It looks a little bit different. Sometimes they're doing a unit of science and then a unit of social studies just for that, the planning and the prepping time that it takes to set up the lab portion of the investigations. So this is back to the accountability. And you'll notice that many of our, the groups are not reported, even though they are student groups larger than 20. And that is because the, if the high school did not have that student group greater than 20, then the state did not aggregate the data to give us those report outs. So it's not on the accountability one, but I do have it. Those were tables just from the DESI website. I do have that information if anybody was curious. We were able to report out for high school in the Hispanic and the multirace, non-Hispanic categories, not in the other subgroups. Any questions on any of? For three, three through eight, we were able to report out on more subgroups. Ls and former Ls, African-American and Black students, Hispanic and Latino, and the multirace students. Were all reportable categories. It just is not in this, these achievement data graphs because the high school did not have the student number groups.
Questions before I advance on LHS math by subgroup?
The student, sorry, the students with disabilities, we're saying there's an almost 5% drop. Is that right? Or an almost 5 point?
Are you talking about high school?
Yeah, the high school math.
Yes, they dropped in both math and ELA.
That's the average, the average scale score, the average composite scale score. There's a drop off, yeah. Same here, where, you know, clearly a target for improvement is the achievement of students with disabilities. And this is in the Science, Technology, and Engineering area.
Can I ask how we are when it comes to numbers for academic support and academic support box?
Up at the high school?
Yeah.
I could get that information for you, but I do not know that.
Just curious if we are fully staffed in that area, if we're still looking for support staff?
Yeah, no vacancies there.
We should be fully staffed.
So this was the cohort, this is amazing, but tracking over time.
So visually perfect for exactly what I was wondering about last year.
And I think too, you know, you look at the 2016, which was our legacy test. And there was a time, eight years ago, when we were consistently seeing numbers, 95, 90% of our students were meeting or exceeding. At that time, it was advanced or provision. But I think what it really highlights, if you look at the yellow 2019, that group of students, when they last took the MCAS in sixth grade, was at 74. In 2023, they were at 75. So certainly in 2021, there was a drop-off. They didn't take it in ninth grade, because we don't have ninth-grade MCAS. But by the time they're at sophomore year, they were, that group, that cohort is back where they need to be. So we can only look at that data with a few subgroups because many of our students weren't taking MCAS prior to COVID. And we don't take the MCAS in ninth grade, they're not reporting that out. So if there's anything specific here that anybody would like to see, but it does show, for the most part, some pretty consistent numbers as the students progress through the grade levels. And then a pretty significant decrease the first year, 2021, and that slow climb back.
And definitely one with that current eighth grade grew to seventh graders from last year, and not really rebounding in that same way.
Yeah, sorry, I'm trying to, I'm trying to make sure I'm reading this correctly. So which groups are not rebounding or not making that climb back?
So as you look at this, our current, the students who were in sixth grade last year in ELA, that would appear that they, from fifth grade to sixth grade, dropped four points overall. Four percentage of the students did not meet or exceed the targets.
Okay. So we've got, like, some groups are getting better, some groups are not getting better. For the groups that are improving over time, have we looked at the trend? Like, are they going to, by the time these kids hit high school, are they going to be back where we want, where they were pre-pandemic? Or do we not know what our growth curve kind of looks like?
No, even, like, if you look back, there's a lot of groups that are in the 60s prior to COVID that ultimately, they still, you know, like, if you look at the royal blue, 68, 74, and then they get to 78. 66, 68, and they get to 73. So if you, if you're looking historically, it, they do get there by 10th grade. I don't know that we have enough information to know how quickly we're going to all get there moving forward. It's like almost this perfect pause in 2020 that reset all of the data for us.
I mean, that seems like the biggest thing for us, right? It's like, we have kids who, like, missed huge chunks of their education. And we have to know whether or not we're going to actually be able to get them back on track by the time they graduate, right?
And of the, let's say, seven grade levels here, it looks like there's probably a couple that still have some ways to go. And the others seem like they're, you know, they're starting to bounce back in the way that we had hoped. And thinking about a child's education over continuum where we have an opportunity, if they don't, if we don't see the improvement that we want in one grade, then we've got an opportunity with them in succeeding grades to get them there.
I think that makes sense. And I think part of what I'm wondering about is like, we could look at these numbers every year and be like, oh, they're going up, they're going up, that's great. But are we going to get back to where we, are we going to get kids back to where they were pre-pandemic? Or are we going to get like 5% below? And that means 5% of kids are not, you know. And I, and I know there's other, it's a little bit more complicated than that because there's like demographic trends and all kinds of stuff, but.
So on this, I'd say, you know, sort of grade 10, last year's grade 10, last year's grade 8 appear to be back at the achievement levels that they had pre-COVID. Last year's grade 7, last year's grade, excuse me, last year's grade 6, last year's grade, last year's grade 7, last year's grade 6, seem like they have a little ways to go. But I think, and this is true across the state, it's encouraging what we're seeing at the lower grades in third and fourth grade. So that kind of mirrors what, what the state results were as well.
Right, but are those, I guess, oh, sorry.
Oh, no, I was just going to say, I'm also seeing, kind of for all the years. And so I think it'll be interesting to see how it plays out with our current seventh and eighth graders over the next couple of years when they get to 10th grade. Because middle school being what it is at a particular time in, in a student's life, not always, you know, there seem to be drops in all the cohorts in those middle school years. We see students who were in elementary at high 70s, below 80s, sometimes even a little higher. And then most of these cohorts, six, seven, and eight, they see a decline. And then often a rebound again in the high school. So I know that that can be a challenging time academically. There's a lot going on in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade at a social-emotional level, at a growth and development level. And so sometimes seeing that dip, and I'm seeing that even in earlier years, going from in the 88s down to the 70s and then rebounding back up again. And going from 80s down to the 60s, low 60s, mid 60s, and then back up to the high 70s in that royal blue cohort by the time they're getting to high school. So I think watching some of these groups to see.
And I think it would just be helpful to push ourselves a little bit on that. And I think, not to say that you all are not doing it, because I think that teachers are, right? If you talk to teachers about, they are seeing like very specific gaps for kids and then trying to fill them. But, you know, to the slide that we saw of the variation across the schools, it's helpful to raise that up, I think, to the school committee level or to, so that we're making sure that where we're seeing trends in like gaps, places where kids have missed out, that we're filling it across the board.
I'm going to add to that, too. You know, I've been thinking, this is about, I'm about to say something anecdotal, not, you know, database, but I think about sort of the routines and procedures that students learn in schools. And depending upon the years that kids missed, you know, you see things like stamina or sense of responsibility, social skills, changing of classes, you know? Sometimes you have kids who miss those transitional years from fifth grade to sixth grade where they learn how to navigate hallways and cafeterias where they might have more freedom than they would have had in an elementary setting. And I'm interested at some point in the future, if someone does a study about the specific grade levels and sort of the additional things, not just academic, but sort of those other things that you learn just by being a student and that you learn from others. I don't know how that would ever play out or how anyone would actually collect data about that. But stamina is, is something that I noticed with a lot of students and just that idea of coming into a classroom and being focused for a certain amount of time. Executive functioning, you know? I think kids at our, at our older grades, you know, our 10th, 11th, and 12th graders missed some really important years about how to, for example, plan ahead. Maybe it's just my kid. Don't talk. But like, if you have something due on Friday, you could start it maybe Tuesday. But that is just mind boggling, I think, if you haven't been practicing some of those skills over many years. So it's just interesting because data always has a story. And so I think that Julie's bringing up a good point, like, is it what we're doing academically? Is it scheduling? Is it like, what are we, you know, what can we sort of think about at each grade level with each cohort about what the needs of those kids might have been when they were not in school? And how can we work to sort of address those academic deficits in the context of, of, you know, testing?
Other thoughts or comments?
I would just say like, again, anecdotally, having a child now who's going through the grade that my other child missed or did hybrid, you see the gaps, like, of like, oh, Dad, I didn't know they were supposed to be learning these things, including some of the more executive function kind of skills. Yeah.
You're right. And when you get to middle school, it becomes more to manage, more teachers, more classes, different behavioral expectations.
Different social situations that you have to navigate that may not have been present that distract from what you might be responsible for in school.
Take a look at math. And Beth, you can modify what I'm saying or tell me I'm wrong. The legacy test on the far left, we almost really, we could even almost drop that off the chart, really.
Can't even compare it really to anything else, correct?
Different tests with different levels of achievement. So you're really, 2017, in most cases, might be a better starting point, really.
And then the high school didn't go into the legacy test until 2019. So they had one year before the pandemic.
So here, current 11th graders, last year's 10th graders seem to, seem to have rebounded. Current, current ninth, last year's eighth seems to be back where they were.
Current.
Current eighth, last year's seventh, again, nice, nice rebound from 2021. So I think, I think the math rebound generally has been stronger. And this is a great way of looking at it, looking at, you know, a particular graduating class. Again, this year's seventh grade, last year's sixth grade when they took the test, seeing some nice improvement. So math seems to be a better experience.
We're also in the second year of a high quality curriculum rollout, so.
Thinking about that, from third to fourth grade jump with the red cohort, that's huge. That's really great work.
So the next portion is getting to the student growth, which I always think really tells an important story about students and how they're growing against their peers. So typical student growth is between 40 and 60. And then I think it's really important to note that 2021 student growth, DESI kind of just gave a data point based on historical data. So it really wasn't relevant to anything. So when you look at kind of how those groups have improved over time, you'll see that the 2021 data almost didn't tell the story of who our students were at the time. So really, 2022 and 2023 is much more accurate student growth data. And you can, so you'll see, like, 2021 in elementary, for ELA, our, our student growth was so high. And then math was, sorry, fourth grade was so high and then math was so much lower. And those were based on historical data points of a historical group of students. So we don't know who that historical group of students was. It was just a historical group in the Commonwealth. So I don't know that those numbers really reflected with how much our students grew from a previous time. So when you look at, you know, more importantly, I think I look at 2022 and 2023. So our fifth grader, our fourth graders at Blueberry Hill were at a 59 and went to 57. So 59 is like almost, you know, 60, if you had 60 for student growth, you're getting four target points on that CPI score for accountability. So anything 60 above is like the best that it can be. So they're, year after year, students are growing at almost at like best of the best level. So even though some of those achievement scores, we have some concerns about, like, I think when we're talking about how our students are recovering from the pandemic, the student growth tells the story. They're growing at a much faster rate than their peers across the Commonwealth. And I think that's really encouraging for us. And I think it's, you know, what gave a lot of teachers like some motivation and pride this year when we saw the scores. It's a great sense of hope to see such high student growth scores. And so I do, I do believe that this slide, although 2021 seems a little bit confusing, the other groups that we're able to track year over year really tell a nice story.
For anyone that happened to be watching at home, you're matching the colors from 2021 to 2022 to 2023 to see the progression, the growth scores of a particular cohort over the, over the years.
So if you look at the far right column for 2023 LPS, all of our student growth is between 50 and 60, which gave us three target points on our CPI, which is pretty, pretty impressive.
Questions before I move off of this slide?
And then math again, in, in many of the categories, we really, math was the area that we grew at the greatest rate. So I think again, you know, we talked about that one fifth grade cohort who has since third grade kind of not been exactly where they needed to be. You see that in the student growth there, but they're still at 48, which is, again, typical growth is between 40 and 60. Anything above 60 is incredible. So although it's the lower group here, it's still, it's still, they're still in the, in the range that we want them to be in. And then like looking at high school, look at from 2021 to 2023, their math growth, 17 to 73. It's pretty incredible.
Can I ask a dumb question? What is it, like, why, why are we looking for typical growth percentiles? Like, that's like typical based on like, this is what we think is possible or?
So they put every 10th grade, every eighth grade student when they, in 2021, that scored a 500 on the math MCAS, every single student across the Commonwealth is put in that group. And they are, they are given a growth percentile based on how they outperformed that cohort of students. So if you're, if Long Island High School is outperforming 73%, that means that 73% of the students that performed at that achievement level, 500, in 2021, they outperformed 73% of those students in the Commonwealth. So it's really showing how students are growing against the similar peers in a achievement level over time.
Students with a similar score history.
The same score history.
Same score history.
So it's really comparing, it's like a very level playing field, and then you're comparing how you grow against that level playing field.
Yeah. But I guess I, the only reason I'm asking is because again, it's kind of like a way of comparing ourselves to a bunch of other students who went through the same issues that we went through, right? And in some cases, probably worse, because we've seen worse drops in scores in other school districts. But it's not, it's not a growth that tells us where we need to get to. It's not, it's not telling us.
If you're 60 or higher, you're like very high. DESI, you're getting four points, the highest amount of points that you can get for, for hitting the growth and achievement levels.
But it's against where we, where we were and where other schools are, not against where we need to go.
It's against, it's against the high achieving, high growth scores are compared to, the growth of high achieving, high growth students are compared to the growth scores of other high achieving, high growth. So.
Right. So it's all baseline to where everyone is, not like getting back to where we were.
Baseline to where other high, where other students with the same score history were. Yes, yeah, yeah.
But I would also look, this is more specific to each individual learner. Like, so this really is highlighting that at the individual level of each student, they are, their growth has come back at a higher rate.
Just, I think growth scores are great. We use them a lot in education policy, but.
Then the last few slides are just by subgroup, and that just is highlighting how the student growth percentage point distribution is made. So again, we're not able to get all of the subgroups if our numbers did not meet a certain criteria. But you can see where we are, a typical growth of pi or where we're exceeding targets.
I'll just scroll through if anyone wants me to stop. Just let me know. Where you see the column with the four and the three, four would be the highest number of points that DESI would assign, would award towards our overall accountability rating. That's the last slide, right?
All right. So looking back over the entirety of the presentation, thank you, Dr. Nelson, for being here. Questions and/or commentary from anyone? No follow up?
Can I?
Yes, absolutely.
I, I think it's, I think we're showing a lot of great progress and I think there's a lot to be proud of. I just think that in, just like as a parent in schools, looking at what we're seeing, I can't say with confidence that what we're seeing shows that the deficits that our kids have from the pandemic are going to be fixed by the time they leave the schools. And I know that like in some ways, that's like an unfair goal to set because there are kids who were, you know, like very far along in our schools, but I think it's a nice place for us to be aiming. And, you know, we should be able to kind of speak to the ways that we're at least trying to, trying to make up those differences, not just in general, not by like, you know, as soon as we can, but by the time those kids leave our schools.
So I'm curious if maybe at a future time, doesn't have to be anytime extremely soon, we could maybe dive into, and this could be a curriculum sub or at a full meeting, but remembering that MCAS is one data point out of many. Are there other data sets that might provide us with an even more detailed view of elementary literacy, of how our students have grown or developed from third grade up through seventh grade, from fifth grade up through eighth grade, whatever grades we're particularly focusing in on some of the students that we might be seeing a little bit of a slower rebound there? It would be interesting to maybe see what some of the other data that we have out there is, other testing that's been done, as well as benchmarks and teacher observations, et cetera, something that maybe gives a little bit more grounding to that picture as well. Could be useful information for the committee here.
And I, you know, to go back to Julie's point, I think really, as we approach budget season and look ahead to the 24, 25 school year, you know, are we making the appropriate investments at the proper, in the proper places to address the, you know, any growth areas that we see? And, you know, I think that comes down to, you know, ensuring that we have proper tiered interventions. It comes down to making sure that we have high quality instructional materials and curriculum for students.
Staffing.
Staffing. So there's, yeah, I think all of this ought to, you know, really drive some of the investments that we're hoping to make in FY '25. And I think you're, you're right that, you know, we still have to keep our eyes on the recovery of students who had that learning loss associated with the pandemic. And that's, that's a, that's a critical target for us, for sure.
And to add to that, I just think our focus on MTSS is a good place to think about interventions and think about like targeted instruction for underperforming students. And like you said, Marty, what resources should we be funding to help support those growth areas? How are we identifying these students? Are we using MCAS as a measure? Are there other measures?
Yeah. I think we, you know, I think we saw the, the results of the purposeful investments that we made in elementary math. And literacy is under review right now. And, and that's certainly something that this committee will hear more about in the, in the weeks and months ahead, for sure.
I'm thinking too about that, those intervention, also back to budget intervention positions and how much that helped really get that new math curriculum up and running. And for us to really be able to see some of the gains that that has brought about already, thinking about that same information when we're looking at other curriculum investments as well. Are we, are we investing in high quality materials and are we also investing in ensuring that we have specialists or interventionists who are able to really get those programs up and running and moving forward?
And the instructional coaches.
And the instructional, yes, exactly. And at the high school level, that academic support, et cetera, to really move progress forward.
Well, just one more thing, is it FOS? Is that the, you know, I'm just thinking about the science materials. If, if there are problems with time and, you know, implementation associated with time management in terms
had that learning loss associated with the pandemic. And that's, that's a, that's a critical target for us, for sure.
And to add to that, I just think our focus on NTSS is a good place to think about interventions and think about, like, targeted instruction for underperforming students. And like you said, Marty, what resources should we be funding to help support those growth areas? How are we identifying these students? Are we using MCAS as a measure? Are there other measures?
Yeah. I think, you know, I think we saw the results of the purposeful investments that we made in elementary math. And literacy is under review right now. And that's certainly something that this committee will hear more about in the, in the weeks and months ahead, for sure.
I'm thinking too about that, those intervention, also back to budget intervention positions, and how much that helped really get that new math curriculum up and running. And for us to really be able to see some of the gains that that has brought about already, thinking about that same information when we're looking at other curriculum investments as well. Are we, are we investing in high-quality materials? And are we also investing in ensuring that we have specialists or interventionists who are able to really get those programs up and running and moving forward?
And the instructional coaches.
And the instructional, yes, exactly. And at the high school level, that academic support, et cetera, to really move progress forward.
Well, just one more thing. Is it FOS? Is that the, you know, I'm just thinking about the science materials. If, if there are problems with time and, you know, implementation associated with time management in terms of setting up project-based learning, what are some solutions to that? And how can we address that? And if that is an obstacle to working on science in school, then is it the best curriculum choice?
I think, I think science and social studies, regardless of the curriculum, I think, you know, with the attention that we've had post-pandemic on math and literacy, I think it's, it's been a challenge for us. So it's something that we have to really be more thoughtful about.
Nicole, do you think at some point we could have Nicole Parrish Pro come talk to us specifically about students with dysentery?
Yeah, that's a good idea. Yeah, that would be great. To maybe expand on the data from that one group especially.
I'd also like to see some kind of data about the EL and former EL students. I understand why it wasn't in the accountability report, but what their progress looks like.
We do have that for 3rd through 8th. It was reported out, it's not reported out for the high school because the groups were too slow. But for science, technology, and engineering, the Ls and former Ls achievement was 501. For math, for grades 3, 3, for Ls and former Ls, it was 503. And for ELA, for Ls and former Ls was 495. They just missed the meeting expectations.
Was that on the slides? And I'm just not seeing it?
It's not on the slides because these were tables provided by DESI.
Yeah.
Had to go into some of the portal to get that information.
Gotcha. Okay. Could you get the numbers?
I didn't get, could I get them, like, written down somewhere?
Sure.
Yes.
We'll send it.
Listening but looking, so I didn't get them all.
Trying to find the right spot to put them, same. Okay. Other questions, thoughts, or feedback? Thank you. Appreciate you coming in tonight. And everybody's thoughtful conversation and questions and information in advance, and looking everything out there. So appreciate all of the work everybody did on that. Wonderful. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night. We are returning back to school committee goals. Based on our conversation from our last meeting, Mary and I put together a draft copy of the school committee goals, which is in your packet. And everyone should have a copy of that. And we'll open that for some discussion and/or feedback as needed, and/or possible motions.
Nicole, I just, I can't remember this from the last.
Steal yours to hold on.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
I can't remember from the last meeting, but on 2A, why did we pick those three things?
So one of the conversations, or one of the notes that came up in the pullout of all of the commentary was that as a possible suggestion, so our, our goal last year related to policy was that we would review all the policies, which feels big and a little unmanageable, particularly given that there are hundreds of them. And so one of the suggestions that came out of that polling of the group was to focus in on areas of policy that were particularly related to our other goals. So since our other goals were fairly focused on curriculum review and adoption, obviously with the middle school building project, we have whole facilities revamped, but also facility updates and capital projects, et cetera, and then the middle school building. So that was, that was the only thought there. But definitely open to other ideas. Just trying to hone in a little bit more and make it slightly more manageable.
I think honing in sounds great. Do we have policies related to the middle school building?
Maybe not particularly to that project, but particularly to.
Nothing that's coming to mind, but it really is driven by the requirements of the MSBA and state statute. But we can, we can take a look at that.
Any errors that you notice also as well? If you notice commas, semicolons, et cetera, please let me know about those now.
I feel like that was Gianna's specialty.
I know. She was very good at that. She is very good at that. I miss having her eye on that.
And just so everyone knows how we arrived at this, we took the information from the last two meetings and all of the notes that folks made about the previous goals. And then Nicole and I sat down and we tried to be like, did we capture what everyone said? So if you're feeling like, oh, they didn't capture this, please let us know because we really.
Feel like I said this, and I really wanted to see it.
Tried to be reflective of what our discussions were at the previous meetings and, you know.
I'm actually pretty impressed with how well you captured everything.
Oh, good.
I think all this looks great. The only one on here that I keep on sitting back, I remember putting this on here about four years ago. I don't know whether it belongs on here. I think it belongs on Dr. O'Shea's is 3C. I get why we did it, and it's wonderful to have them here. But if you, Dr. O'Shea's driving that bus, kind of on your, like, you do a good job, we're responsible for making sure you do a good job. It's kind of on you, like, we expect that, we love it. I don't know whether it's a school committee goal, but everything else looks awesome.
I may have made a note that said, I'm not quite sure this is a school committee goal, but also I really love that we do this, and I don't want to see it go away.
Maybe it's a, hey, you know, we expect this, you know, this is on you, like, but as a school committee, I'm sitting here going, is that really my responsibility? That's kind of your responsibility.
I would say the only thing that might make it our responsibility is that we do set our agenda. And so ensuring that in our agenda, we have made space to highlight student presentations.
Which, that's a good point. Yeah.
Fits in for that.
It's the only one feels weird as a read. But everything else, that's, you know, it's high level, it's very good, it's strategic, and I'm good. If you want to leave it, that's fine. It just looks odd to me, but I don't, that won't be the first thing.
We could also change wording to say and ensure, you know, agenda items that highlight student presentations, et cetera. That might maybe make it a little bit more strategic.
Yeah.
We're all ready to go with dates that the principals have signed up for already.
I figured you already had it. So it's like, it's kind of got into rhythm last two or three years. And I remember we were at the St. Mary's is where this came up.
Yes, that's right.
Whenever we all brought it up, and we're like, oh, we never see this. But then we thought it was, you know, then it made sense. But as you sit back going, I don't think it really made that much sense. But no, that's fine. It's fine.
Does it work that way?
Yep.
I know, Diane, you're probably typing at home. So if on 4C, after the word "and", we write in, or 3C, sorry, thank you. 3C, after the word "and", and develop agenda items, numbers?
Agendas.
Yes. Develop agendas that highlight student presentations to the school committee, et cetera.
But thank you for doing this.
Can I propose a couple things?
Yep.
One, I'm going to take Gianna's role, because like, I do think.
Love that. Thank you.
You know, we could, we could just do semicolons after each one, because there's a comma thing going on.
We started there, and then we went back and forth a few times, and then we landed on commas. And yeah, that was a point of question mark for us as well.
One thing, I think, I think probably I would either delete middle school building project, or like, add it to like, facilities updates, including the middle schools here, because I don't think we'll probably have a ton of policies related to that. But I would propose that we add policies related to technology use.
Oh, good point.
Can we do that? I'm asking you if it, I guess it's.
And technology use?
Yeah. And then the only other thing I would add is just on the one, 3A, just put like, timely updates and opportunities for feedback or something, just for like, community feedback in the middle school.
Wait, which one?
3A is about supporting the feasibility study for writing the community with timely updates. And I would just say like, opportunities for input.
Oh, timely updates and opportunities for inputs?
Yeah.
Okay. With detailed and timely updates, comma, opportunities
Input.
Input. And viable options for the middle school building project. Okay. All right. So we've got semicolons on most of them. We did the comma thing. We'll do a semicolon on two. We'll do one back. We got rid of the semicolons on the ones where there were only two, because we finally were like, maybe it doesn't need a semicolon. We'll put them back, just to keep it, you know, the same. Okay, so changes that I see, semicolons after each one. On 2A, after facilities updates, comma, including the middle school building project, instead of and, and then comma, and technology use, semicolon. On 3A, after detailed and timely updates, comma, opportunities for input, comma, and then viable options. And then 3C, we already discussed, and develop agendas that highlight student presentations. Any other things? Okay, so those are as amended? We'll change that instead of as presented to as amended. All right. Any other feedback and/or possible motions?
Okay, I move the school committee approve the school committee 2023, 2024 goals as amended.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All right. Just to say that I kind of really enjoyed this process this year, having the opportunity to really kind of dive into and consider how strategic our goals are, and if they are actionable, and be a little bit maybe more specific in our goals. So appreciate everybody's input on that process and the time that you took to give feedback along the way. All right. Any further discussion?
Thank you, Nicole and Mary, for doing this.
Sure, of course.
It came out really great.
Thank you. All right, we will move to a vote. Zach?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
And yes for me as well. Have a lovely evening. We will see everyone in a few weeks.